All right. Good evening. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the temporary rules and procedures committee. In attendance is Council Board along and Council Franco. Mr. Bert Town Manager. And I believe that's it. And I'm gonna ask for approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty. Oh, special minutes from October twenty nine, two thousand twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Three zero zero note, any extensions?
All same.
You, okay. So that is two in favor, zero, I should ask for any nays. Two in favor, zero, zero nays and one extension. So then I'm going on to new business. So my goal is tonight is to work on this one at a time, section by section. And hopefully more counselors would be able to give us their concerns so that we can look at this fully. And like I said, we can start off with rule one and two and work our way down. And then we'll be each, every couple of weeks, every two to three weeks to work on each section, just in case there's other information that's come up, uh, come up, come up. Does that sound good for you guys?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
So I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
Unless it's not a good time, I can wait if it's up to you.
No, go ahead.
Okay, sure. Um, I just wanna talk about process and format here. Um, are we gonna use the screen share as the, you know, the chair so that we can look at the um, documents and then have notes done in real time with it so that we can kinda, you know, do, start building our rough draft by, um, you know, just putting in a few things as we go. Doesn't have sentences or, uh, I'm sorry, you want, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to respond to that real quick.
Can I finish my thought?
Let me answer that. The goal is to do that, but one at a time, but right now I cannot open my computer, it's not acting right, so I cannot do screen share at the moment.
So I just was thinking it would be a great idea to use the screen share option and then we can load in the old rules and then we can just type little notes into it.
Yes, but everybody should have a copy of the rules that came in them, their meeting minutes packet.
I'm aware that, um, Mrs. Counselor Parker, I was just making a mere suggestion that we could load in a, load this into a Google Doc, share the Google Doc and we all could have access to it and just like type in suggestions so we can see it in real time. I was just trying to make it more clear.
I was, that's why I wanted everyone to email their requests and then we do it from that way and then I would type everything up and with the highlights and email everyone.
If that's the way you'd like to run it, that's fine. Thank you.
So we'll set, take it role by role. And go from there and we did receive a concern from Counselor Casari and we will review that. I have some questions that need to be answered and I don't know if anyone else has questions. And we can do that in a couple of weeks. And I know we received information from us, I hope a rotten resident um, that we received this evening and we are not working on that or reviewing that tonight. Because I received that this evening as I'm leaving work, so we will be looking at that another day. Again, thanks, thank you to the citizen that submitted this. But I, right now I'm looking for the counselor's input at this time before we move or open it up to citizens. Thank you. Yes, Council Board along.
Um, thank you, um, Counselor Parker. I, yeah, I was too, was gonna just share that communication that I forwarded that email. It came in last night and I just saw it after I got out of work, so I just wanted to get it over to, um, the first and foremost, the, um, the temporary rules committee. I did send it over to John, I think Andre has it and, uh, the rest of the counselors, I can also send it to as well. But, um, again, it was just sent over because it was a communication, it is F-Loi-able and it is a citizen, um, in our town and I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that that had come in. So thank you.
Chairman Parker, if you're possibly talking, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I had asked, um, Ms. Hilton to both the thirty first and the thirty second rules. Just to give point of reference and I almost sent the thirtieth because I've looked at all three or the previous two with the thirtieth before we changed to thirty second. So the reason why I had that, the thirty first on is that we may want to re-incorporate some things or maybe change a verbiage or anything else. So our thirty second starts off with all requirements of the charter revision charter with respect to the proceedings of the council are to be strictly followed. And the council showed that no rule in conflict with any charter requirement and general statutes. One dash two hundred et cetera, uh, as, yes, it's secure Freedom of Information Act here and here and after FOIA requirement respecting such proceedings. So anything we do, any rules we change, we cannot cannot conflict with the charter or general, the Connecticut General Statute, so state law. Just to reiterate everything and freedom, the Freedom Information Act is state law. So we have to proceed that way. Just want everybody to hear that. So any questions about that one or concerns? No?
No.
No concerns, Council Board along?
I'm looking through the, the three different versions here. Um, I'm okay right now, we can, you can move on if you want. I can go back.
We only have two versions here.
I'm doing three, I typed up my own version with my notes, so I have three sections, so I'm flipping between three different, uh, hard copies.
So we are good with rule one. Okay, rule two is the meetings of the councils. All meetings shall comply with FOIA. Each year prior to December thirty first, as required by, um, candidate, cause general statute one dash two two five. The council showed that by resolution schedules for regular meetings of the council for the following calendar year. The schedule may be later amended by resolution. So A and B, are we good with A and B?
I'm good.
Okay, right now, thank you.
All right, C is, uh, in compliance with FOIA. Special meetings of the council may be called by the mayor or the town clerk upon request of three counselors. Emergency meetings shall only be called in the event that a critical situation arises where there is not time to give the prior public notice required for a special meeting. A copy of the minutes of such emergency meeting, setting forth the nature of the emergency and the business conducted shall be filed within with the town clerk within seventy-two hours following any such meeting. An emergency meeting may be called by the mayor, the town manager or the clerk, which if that case. So are we okay with that?
I'm okay with the emergency meeting. I just, I know that there's, um, specific reasons to call an emergency meeting, it can't just there's criteria involved.
Do you want to make sure we get the criteria in there?
Maybe, I don't know, I don't know if it's necessary, but.
Your thoughts, Council Board along?
Um, in that area, just flip back here. Um. I, I kinda looked at that area as a, um, a bit of needing some clarification in some aspects. I think what's there is great. I think, but it could be a little bit more defined and clear.
What do you mean?
I'm sorry, did you, are you done?
No, I was asking, what do you mean? I just want to see where you're going.
Okay, I just didn't, I didn't know if you had something to add. Um, so I'm just, like I said, I have notes here, so I'm just going through, this is a working group, so it, it's not a, um, I
No, this isn't working with this, the group, so.
I understand, but we're, we're working like two, two pieces apart and pick apart, so we're moving at a pace that can allow such. Um, so I was thinking, that's what I'm saying. Um, looking at C to me, it looks as if it could be broken down into three separate, um, subgroups under that same paragraph, allowing it to define each of them separately. So what I have here is C would be special meeting and it would be defined there and we could, you know, tease out and pull out some of the stuff from C to elaborate how we wanna define a special meeting. D would be an emergency meeting using some of the current stuff from C and then E would be FOI rules um, and executive sessions, um, as well. So there's ways in which we could, I'm, I'm sorry, did you wanna say something?
I was gonna ask what you, what would you be defining the special meeting as?
It would be really helpful for me if I could finish my thought as I'm talking, cause you are kind of interjecting to ask and I'm getting there, but I just don't have a chance to get there. So just if you could be a little bit, uh, give me a little bit more time, please. Thank you. Um, what I'm trying to say is that, for example, under C, you could add in, um, I'm trying to look through here, it has special meetings, um, it kinda state here, we could say special meetings of the council may be called by the mayor, which we already have up in the original part, or my addition would be, um, we can do, um, by the town council clerk and in compliance with FOI requirements, special meetings must have no less than twenty-four hours prior to public notice. Um, and you can also add in there that, um, the original part with the, um, the clerk upon request with three counselors. And then kinda separate the special part out from the emergency. This one paragraph, you really don't under, it doesn't really clearly explain, uh, exactly how each of those are completely executed in the way that it's currently written. Um, we could work together to, I'm open to suggestions on that if you guys want, um, and I will forward my final drafts of my, my first draft of some suggestions to you guys. I didn't know if we were gonna do screen share, but since we're not, then I guess we, you know, will forward them forward. Does anyone else have any thoughts about how to break that up?
I, I, you should break it up because the special meeting was either a special meeting that we would have to call and it has to be done within a certain time period or emergency meeting, which is gonna require us to either way post something within seventy-two hours of our meeting. Special meetings is when we have if I'm thinking correctly, Mr. Bert, that we had to have a special meeting, the committee of the whole meeting after we've made a decision about the mayor.
Right.
No, Ms. Ms. Counselor, I do not have you moved over yet, thank you. So either way, we still have to have stuff written and submitted in, within a timely manner. And an emergency meeting is called if something happened within the town and the mayor, uh, the manager, the mayor or the town clerk has to say, you guys need to meet on this subject ASAP.
Right, and I think just for read easy, you know, for the read, for reader, if we broke it apart and I was only amending the, the, the special meeting a little bit, D and E, the only thing I did is made one emergency and one FOI rules and executive session and just kinda cleaned up that paragraph a little bit, um, without changing really any of the words.
So, Mr. Bert, would it be possible for you to provide examples of special meetings and, um, emergency meetings? That we may incorporate that into our verbiage?
I mean, I just, before he adds, can I finish, uh, my other part to this? But.
Uh, well, uh, go ahead.
So these changes that I'm, you know, I'm, I'm attempting is just to clear up any confusion between special meetings, emergency meetings, along with how they can be called. So just by changing it a little bit with the C, um, under special meetings and cleaning it up just a hair and giving it its own section. The current C would become the C for special meetings, then we'd have D under emergency and E FOI rules. Uh, which once again, under emergency, I'm just copying exactly what's out of C.
I understand that, I heard that when you explained it, um, I'm just trying to provide examples for the next council so that we have clear information because someone may ask, what is the special meeting and what is, what would be considered as emergency meeting? Hence my question about verbiage of examples that we can try to incorporate on how we write it into our rules. If you're breaking it apart.
On FOIA, other than of the legislature, there's really not emergency meetings per se, they're really, you know, it's just any meeting has to be at least twenty-four hours regardless, so really, an example of an emergency meeting will come down to what you guys decide, if you want special rules for, you know, you'll have to first tell me what you're thinking for the circumstance, cause otherwise it's really just a special meeting.
So, um, I have, what Rachel has her.
Council Franco?
Thank you. I recall, um, Tom Hennig's, uh, FOIA training, um, previously. And he said like emergency meetings would be something to the effect of the roof on the high school collapsed and the council has to get together to approve spending funds very quickly and there was no time to notice the meeting. It was something that has to be like extremely emergency. Um, an extreme emergency, like that just could not wait and that the powers of the town manager just couldn't do on his own. And, and it had to be like huge. Um, and it can't be for a simple reason, you can't have an emergency meeting simply because something needs, has a deadline and you didn't notice, you notice it quick enough. Um, that's not considered emergency meeting, that's what I, I, I got out of the FOI training. Um, special meetings, from what I understand, are, are things that are on our calendar, that they are, um, like a meeting that just isn't already noticed, like that we just approved, like a whole year's worth of meetings. Um, and if we had a meeting that wasn't under those dates and times, that would be considered a special meeting. Um, I think I understand what Council Board along is trying to request. And basically we're in the, I guess it's the third line down where it says emergency meetings. Right there would start a new paragraph basically and what you would, you would have to add in the beginning in compliance with FOI requirements, comma, emergency meeting shell, blah, blah, blah. So she's just asking basically, from what I understand, to break apart the paragraph into two paragraphs instead of one and maybe throw a letter in front of it. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's a need for it or, but I understand her reasoning for it. So.
Uh, uh, this is John, I've got the FOIA, you know, law up. Now there's, there's no special rules in that for, for emergency meetings. Um, so I don't know if there's a, maybe a, you know, an opinion, they put out opinions sometimes from the FOIA Commission on how things should be handled. Um, so I have not seen that, but it's not in there, but just remind, the charter does have for emergency appropriations, you know, for different levels of appropriation, how many council members have to be voting for them and that type of thing.
Unless we put that in there, but yes, Council Board and I understand splitting it apart, um, we can type it that way. As I can't get onto my computer, unfortunately, I would have been able to do it and show that, so, but yeah, we would have to put that verbiage in. Except for that last line, cause our emergency man, meeting would need to be moved up to where the emergency meetings shall only be called in the, the event. At least that's my thinking. Cause we said special meetings could be called and then we go into emergency meetings. But we split everything apart, yeah, I can see that, C and make it C and D and move for, and current D to E. Is that okay with thought process or just leave as is and maybe bring this up to the council as a whole?
I think it's just administrative, I, I think it's fine, just moving it into a separate paragraph and signing a letter, that's fine.
Um, I, Counselor Parker, do you want us to use hands or do you just want us to talk? Cause I was using the hand, but I then, you were asking and I didn't wanna interrupt you, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear on your format.
I asked the question, so I'm waiting for a response.
All right, so we're not using hands, all right, so.
Right now.
Um, yeah, so basically what I'm doing is there's only one section that has a little bit of an addition. Um, it basically, yes, D becomes E, um, and this just makes it a little bit more easy when you look under being of the council, you can quickly look down and see emergency meeting just as written. And, you know, special meeting and FOI, um, you know, just it allows, uh, um, so the only thing that I changed was special meeting of, of the council may be called by the mayor or, um, or by the town clerk upon request of, of three counselors, that part says, stays the same and I just put in compliance with FOI requirements, special meetings must have no less than twenty-four hour prior public notice, so, and the rest reads as written, just giving it, breaking it down, so.
Chairman Parker, Chairwoman Parker.
Yes, sir.
I just gonna say, I did, I just found on the FOIA Commission website about urgency meetings, it basically says the only, you know, you can bypass all notice rules, it just says you have to have the minutes done in seventy-two hours afterwards.
That's what I thought, I just, I just wanna mention this, okay. Council Franco, you still have something?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't take my hand down. But do we wanna keep a special meeting that it's just three counselors approve it or do we wanna increase that to the majority of the council? Five.
I, I think three is, I think three is at least, I think three at minimum.
Well.
We've had numerous special meetings over the last year. I don't know who approved all those, I mean, like in the past so many years.
Yeah. John, do you have any information on that or?
So is that the call of the mayor or else, there's always, it can always be done by the mayor at any time, but, um, but other than that, it's just what your rules are.
So I can see, I understand Counselor Franco's interest because technically according to five point three, we still need six members to show constitute a quorum to have about no ordinance resolution to vote adjourn or fix of time, place for meetings. And then anything else shall be adopted by less than five affirmative votes. So if we're having special meetings, I, I can see where we could, should probably maybe have four to five people saying, hey, we need, no, actually five, because to say, hey, we need a meeting.
Because the mayor can call at any time and that's how at our meetings, we have special meetings, sometimes do it under a cow, back to a town council meeting and things of that nature. So that's by necessity and, but if council wants to do it, do we want just three or should we have it as a majority? Because otherwise some people may not be able to even attend and if only three say, I wanna, I wanna a meeting.
And then we end up having a meeting because we don't have a quorum-ish, we couldn't, well, I, I agree, I can see five, cause majority would be five. Council Board along, thoughts?
Um, I still think three is a good number, I don't see any reason for correction there.
Council Franco, you looking at five, four or five?
Yeah, I'm just checking the charter real quick.
Uh, it's page seven. Cause technically, six members are a quorum, but we need five votes.
Mm-hmm.
So basically anything we do, we should at least mimic what the town charter says.
Right. Yeah, it just says we shall provide method for calling a special meeting.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm okay, we can put either or, uh, cause this is gonna have to be brought up to the majority anyways, so we can put both in with three and then with a five and then let the council as a whole decide.
Okay. You go with that.
All right, section D. Executive sessions, FOI rules allow executive sessions close to the public to be conducted only for specific reasons. The reason for the session shall be publicly stated along with the names of the persons other than the council's invited to attend. The reason for the session and the names of all persons invited to attend shall be recorded in the minutes. A two-thirds vote of the members of the council present and voting at a public meeting shall be necessary to approve a motion to go into executive session. Council minutes will indicate the time the council went into and came out of the executive session and any vote taken after exist, executive session in the public meeting. So I don't see that changing. And it's very specific what FOIA wants. So we have all what FOIA says on this one.
So is my thing, uh, there's no change there, just switching the letters around.
What letters? Oh, you mean just, you mean moving it down one? Yeah, I'm not worried about the formatting right now, I'm just looking at current D. Not the proposed D, I mean E. So we're, we're good with this one?
Yeah, I don't see anything at this moment.
All right, so now we're on to rule three. Uh. Um.
Do you want me to read?
I'm, I'm sorry?
I can read too, if you don't wanna read all of them.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want me to help out with A?
Uh, yes, please, cause I didn't get any drinks, so. I'm out.
Just a point, a point of clarification before we start, so I just wanna, from my notes, what, what do we have down for that section as our closeout? Just a point of clarification before we start, so I just want to, from my notes, what what do we have down for that section as our closeout?
For our closeout, we have rule two. A is good. Rule. To B is good. Rule C is going to be split. With the options, well, with the to include the twenty four hours prior for the special meeting. With. Highlight of three. Counselors or five counselors. As a yellow highlight for the whole coun- council as a whole to decide. D will be. There will be a new D. With emergency meeting separating those two and then. Current D on our paper, but will now be E.
Thank you. Rule three, section A. The town clerk is the clerk of the council and shall keep minutes of council proceedings, including all votes of all counselors and summaries of decisions sufficient. To inform the public. All minutes of the council shall be kept in compliance with FOIA requirements.
I don't see any issue. Council Franco, any issues?
No.
Council Board along?
I guess, um. There's been a lot of discussion about word minutes. Seemed like at the RTM last night, town council, um, I don't have any changes here, but. I basically have a new aside here that I'm reading. You know, how are we defining those minutes? All votes of counselors, summaries, discussions, submission information from the public. Like that, I think. Um, as we start to work through this, the word minutes can, um, it seems to be a gray area and and that.
It is not, we have to go by what FOIA requires. We are only supposed to provide. When the meeting's called. Who's at present at the meeting? How the motions are made. Be a, how many yeses, how many no's and how many abstains? Who voted that way? The. Pertinent information, the motion on the floor, if there's a motion, what that motion was and then. And then the closeout. FOIA is very specific about what should be in there.
Sorry, rules of order that specifically states for minutes as well.
Yes.
Right, and that's, um, I appreciate that, um, explanation, but as we read it here, it states that. Um, council, the the current rules, state counselors and summaries and discussions isn't sufficient to the imper- um, to inform the public. Uh, that doesn't say exactly what you just said, uh, including all votes is in there, but, um. Discussion is not really defined and it, I think there is a bit of a gray area there, so.
People can review the recording of every meeting as it's recorded. Because. I do not see, and like I said, I have experience doing this. As a secretary for other things and for work for taking minutes. According to FOI and Roberts rules, we only need specific things and to meet the criteria. So unless we break down what FOIA says and what Roberts rule says. We're supposed to be going by FOIA requirements, which is what the state requires.
Yeah, uh, again, I I respect that, but if that's the case, then maybe we should write that in here. What's written here doesn't say. Exactly what those Robert rules did, you know, say, um. And maybe we should also then add that caveat of stating, um, that little sidebar note that keeps coming up that, um. If we're going to write it just as that, as stated, we should, it should be written as that and we should also state that, you know. Um, full, full explanation is, you know, a- available, um, on all, um, videoed and recorded. That'd be great to kind of start putting that technology into our wording.
Okay, I might, okay, I'm going to go. This because meetings have been recorded for years. For years and we did not have to put a caveat that is being recorded. Or that they can go back and view everything, because most people. Around here can go and look because everything's posted. Are available in the town clerk's office about the meetings that they can go and review said meetings. So you want to include a line to say. Please go review the tapes. If you have any questions or concerns about it. But most people know that we're recording. The meeting minutes, the meetings as is.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. At our last meeting, it was noted noticed that that will be put in our minutes. Um, by the town manager stated that he would be putting that in the minutes saying for full. You know, information, see the meeting. Videos, so that's already going to be on there. I understand the summaries of discussion sufficient to inform the public. Um, but this is where the problems with the council lies, where some people want almost a transcript written. And some people are like, don't put as much in there because I don't, it's not necessary. So maybe we should just write summaries of discussion sufficient to inform the public per FOI and Roberts rules order requirements. Or requirement minimums. Or just requirements. So then it it's clearly stated, it's like all we have to do is put the things you're stating, what you stated earlier in there. And we don't have to go into a full barrage of what everybody said. What do you think?
Alright, let me read what you're saying for it. Town clerk is the clerk of the council and shall keep minutes of the council proceedings, including all votes of all counselors. And summaries of discussion sufficient to inform the public. Per FOI and Roberts rules requirements.
Yep, and that's it.
And then the meetings shall be kept in compliance with FOI, uh, shall be kept in compliance. Okay. Council Board along?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I can agree with Counselor Franco that word discussion, um. I do think though, you know, it should be stated, I mean, if no one, we have to assume that. When people read rules that some people have never been involved in government ever in their life, maybe a young person coming in. And it would be appropriate to just make sure it's defined clearly that these are, if it's going to be just a, um. A quick, um, the the requirements, which are just short notes, shorthand notes. That, um, a more detailed, um, explanation and and you know, whatever could be found. I think it's important to add it on here. You don't have to. It's great that we're finally going to add it, um, you know, as it was brought up at the other meeting. But I also think that it's also important to make sure all cities, all citizens that take the time to send in an email. Um, that that's also attached to these minutes.
Attached to the minutes after the end. The, those are attached, they're on website.
It's a FOIA requirement.
Requirement, it's a FOIA requirement.
Should we add that? I understand by just adding FOIA, but again, as a quick read. Without having to go into the whole FOIA requirement attachment to find that and then go into Robert's rules. It would be appropriate to say that, um, communities, um, you know, uh, communities, um. Communication, you know, is also, uh, just a thought once again.
But I think these rules are for us, it's not.
I I can agree with you guys to an extent, but I also do think that these rules govern and this is what the community used to see that we're governing under our rules. So yes, it is for us, but the community at large, um, is a big factor in 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 seeing, um. In re- reviewing these, there's times when community has come out and said certain things weren't being followed for our own rules, so they they do read them. So I do think it's to have clear defined rules that one can reference. Um, is, is just, it's great, you, it's, it takes a lot of time to have to go look in. The Roberts rules or the F, right, you know, not everybody knows the FOI requirement, you know. I'm not saying we should write it all the way out, but I think having at least, you know. Stating that, uh, community, um, communications from the community, um, will also be attached to the minutes per. The FOI requirements, blah, 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 blah.
During the meetings, when, uh, when we have Mrs. McCowshere. At the meetings for our council meetings, that she does say that these will, your minutes, and if she has emailed everyone saying. These will be attached to the town council's meeting minutes after their meeting. So I don't think we should have to do that part.
That's fine. This is rec, just a mere recommendation, just throwing options out, that's what we're brainstorming tonight, so. It was just on my list and I thought I would ask and see what you guys thought. Thank you.
Thank you. You still want to keep your hand raised?
Whatever is easier, are we doing hands? Are we going to just?
Your hand's still up. Did you have something else to add?
Oh, no, I was just getting to the point of clicking it down. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, if the clerk is not present at the time, a meeting is called to order, the mayor or the, or pro town shall appoint a clerk pro town. To keep the minutes of the meeting and to file them in the office of the clerk town clerk in a timely manner according to FOIA requirements. I think that's. Self-explanatory. And let's, Council Franco.
This did pop up when, um. The one time. Mayor Grantowski was not in attendance and we sort of didn't know what to do. So we had, I remember a discussion saying maybe we should clarify this in our rules when it did come up.
That, no, this one's just, that's separate, that's a separate issue. This is just only with the clerks not available. Don't worry about pro town yet.
Okay, so if the clerk isn't present, the mayor or pro town shall appoint a clerk pro town to keep the minutes.
Correct.
And then somebody in our meeting, like this happens actually, um. I don't know, there, it has happened, I think, when she wasn't there and then they. We, I think it was stated that they, it, because the meetings are recorded, that sometimes they would take the minutes from the recording afterwards.
Well, yes, and I believe at one point, um, the assistant town clerks were either there or like, um. Mister Bert said, he would have somebody type them up from the meeting minutes, from the video.
Okay.
So. And it's still, it still fills the FOI requirements.
Okay, yes, it does. Alright, so I'm good with that then.
Council Board along, are you good with B?
I might have nothing on that section. I'm fine right now. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Quorum and vote. In accordance with section five point three of the Charter, six members shall constitute a quorum at a council meeting. But no ordinance, resolution or vote except to adjourn or to fix a time and place of the next meeting shall be adopted by less than five affirmative votes.
That's taken right from the Charter, so.
So this is where I was wondering if, um. I'm not exactly sure where in our rules it should apply or if we would like to add, um, the attendance. Electronic attendance.
Yes, I was wondering about that too.
Yeah, I looked through this last night and I was trying to figure out exactly the right spot and I'm not sure.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I was thinking maybe somewhere in this section might go. The attendance for counselors and electronically. Um, but then there's also, um. Attendees and that might have to go in another place or or should we create something, a new area altogether? I'm not exactly sure. Because there is also a section later on, I'm sorry to jump around, but, um. In citizens petition where it talks about. Council reserves the right to adopt guidelines to ensure that any recording of its proceedings do not disrupt, but that's, it doesn't actually pertain to this, but it's. Similar. Um, so I'm not exactly sure and do we want to just wait and and deal with that later on it, on a separate topic?
And yes, separate topic, because I know we're going to have to look at that, because since. This governor said we can do hybrid right now and. We'll have to figure that part out if he. Changes his mind, I think. This would be easier to have a hybrid, so how to write the verbs correctly in there. Um, actually, probably should review FOIA. And see how they did it, if they said anything about that, so we may have some homework to do.
Right, okay. But other than the. Quorum section of having six and five affirmative votes, section A, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Question of, let me put that in there, question of basically hybrid. Yes, Council Board along. Council Board along?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to respond and ask a question to John about, um. Uh, Counselor Castieri's request, which I think is great. Um, and we just stated, but wouldn't the word just attendance cover that or, I mean, wouldn't we be. Under the governance guidance as stated, like, um, would we have to really add anything, but at the, or at the time, we just adopt what? It, um, and where do we stand on that currently?
That, I think that's why I said we'll come back to that, so that we all.
Right, I wanted to ask John for my notes, that's what I was asking.
Please repeat, sorry, somebody's, uh. Getting some messages.
Council Board along, can you repeat what you just asked? Thank you.
Thanks, um, I was just asking with Counselor Castieri's request with the whole attendance hybrid model. Um, I just wanted to get an update like where we at, we're at with that in, with this, um. And wouldn't the word attendance just kind of suffice for that? I mean, attendance is attendance and it's been acknowledged that attendance means hybrid or. Um, in, you know, however, just wanted to check.
There's no set rule on it, um. There are some particular things that you have to do for FOIA with hybrids and, uh, and I'd said those, uh, Counselor Franco, did you forward those on? The, uh. I had sent, Counselor Franco asked you about the hybrid rules with where that's going with the state, so I sent her something this afternoon.
Yes, I did forward that to the committee and it was probably late and it might not have been read yet and that's also, I believe, why. We're going to wait on, wait on that section and come back to it at a later time.
And it's kind of a weird one. The, the requirements of FOIA is kind of reads odd, so it's going to take a little time.
Alright, perfect. Thank you.
So moving on to section B. A meeting may continue only in the presence of a quorum. In the absence of a quorum, the mayor shall declare the meeting adjourned to a future date. Prior to adjourning, for lack of quorum, the mayor may declare a recess for a period of. Period not to exceed thirty minutes to obtain a quorum.
Okay. I believe that only happened not to. This current council, this, um, Mister Bert. This, this has happened before where we had to wait for people to show up, right? Not, it's happened in the past.
Yeah, it's happened a few times, yeah.
So, um, this is not changed, I'm, I'm okay with this. Um, Council Board along, are you? Council Board along?
Yes, thank you. I'm just digging through the papers here, sorry. So in the thirty first, it was sixty minutes, correct?
No, that was thirty minute, oh yes, sixty minutes, no. The first section, we're on section B. Is thirty minutes. I'm, we're not on section C yet. We're only on section B and section B is the same, it has not changed.
I'm fine with that, I'm jumping ahead, sir.
Want me to move on to C? See, in exceptional circumstances such as the attendance of a large number of citizens, the ex. Expectation of the imminent arrival of a counselor or the needs to address time sensitive issues. The mayor or presiding officer may extend the recess period to thirty minutes. In no case shall the recess exceed a total time of thirty minutes.
Yeah, I think the previous, what council Borderline was speaking of on page two. Which is technically page six of our packet, is that they had sixty minutes. But if we need more than, I, I don't think we need more than thirty minutes to see if someone's gonna come and have the meeting. Because within thirty minutes, we're gonna decide if we're gonna have the meeting or adjourn it to a future date. If we don't have a quorum.
Right, that's exceptional circumstances, like, like there's a deadline for time-sensitive issues.
Unless we change it back to sixty.
Yeah, it's probably, it doesn't happen really, so I don't see why I wouldn't, you know, because if there's no time-sensitive issues, thirty minutes would apply.
Yes. Council Borderline.
Yeah, I just wanted to check, um, so from the thirty first was there, so it was just uh. Is there any old notes um, or any thoughts as, you know, I know you served on it, if. Was there a reason from going to the sixty to the thirty and and um, was thirty thought to be the best time?
Yes, thirty was thought to be the best time.
I mean, waiting a full thirty minutes seems almost a little bit to me, I, I'm sorry?
Uh, well, it would have been, originally it was an hour, so.
Still finishing my top, my thought though, if I could finish. Um, thank you. It. I see that it went from sixty to thirty. I'm just wondering who really wants to wait thirty full minutes. I mean, that seems. By thirty minutes, I mean, that's a, a long time um. To wait if we're even gonna have a meeting or not, we should know way before that. I, I mean that, I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, for instance, B has thirty minutes also. So are you thinking about cutting down the time? Because sometimes people can't get to the phone. Or maybe they're in an accident or something else has come up and they have to wait the thirty minutes.
I just was looking to see, you know, if the, the thirty is, I mean, if everyone thinks thirty is the best option, then. Down to sixty, um, that's fine. Thank you.
Were you thinking more, less than thirty minutes? Because then we would have to change to one before it. Council Borderline. Council Borderline.
Um, yes, I was just looking at numbers, looking at notes here, brainstorming, just trying to get an understanding from the thirty first to the thirty second. Looking at the time changes and just trying to um, get more information as to uh. You know, the importance and and the time um. Delay, um. So, but yeah, no, thirty, thirty sounds fine. Thank you.
I would like to suggest that C we bring back to sixty, just because if, if there are exceptional circumstances such as we have. Addressed time-sensitive issues, or we have a large number of citizens that are inside. Maybe waiting to speak, that I think that we should be given more time, like you said, if somebody got in a car accident. And they're gonna be like, you know, you can't just leave a car accident and come to the meeting because you got a meeting. So you gotta wait till the police release you and say, okay, you can go now, and it might take some time. I don't know how long it takes, but. Um, I think sixty would probably be. Just for those exceptional circumstances, I think that would be fine. If anybody else would think sixty would be good, I'd go back to sixty.
I'm debating.
Thing, I mean, it's not gonna happen often.
No, that, I think that's why we did thirty minutes, because we didn't think, we, I don't remember ever happening. That we had to wait for a qu- a quorum. To address that time-sensitive issue. So, yes, council Borderline?
I was gonna say, I would only support thirty. I mean, I, I don't think I can support sixty, but I mean, I think all ideas should go forward to the council anyway, so add it into the report, but. As it stated in the previous one, we put thirty um, before that B, so I think thirty is sufficient enough time. And I can't remember in the two years that I've been on that we needed to wait sixty minutes ever, so I, I think it's not needed, but that's just me. Thank you.
Well, I can write it up as either this time or this time with.
Let the committee figure it out.
Yes. Because I'm good with thirty, but we need to, at least with the rest of the council, see this. Um, alright, I'll read the last one. All votes shall be recorded by name and made available for public inspection pursuant to requirements of Connecticut. General statutes one, two, two, five, A, even if taken at one session of a continuing meeting. Um, I think that's self-explanatory. But does anybody have concerns about that one? Council Board.
Uh, thank you, no, I don't have anything. Thank you.
We're gonna do section five. And that'll be the last one for this evening, because I figure we have some stuff we need to review. We do have. The email from the citizen. That I would like some time to review and um, counselor. Castieri's um, email and the information council Franco. Received this evening. About the electron, or the hybrid type of. Meeting attendance and stuff. So if we can do five and then review everything and um. Review five and then review the other two items and then come back and decide on the next meeting. Um, where's my calendar? And is two weeks a good time? Counselor Franco, you, it, two weeks, good time for you?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the calendar's gonna look like either because of committee assignments for liaisons and such, um.
No, that's, I'm actually waiting to see that part two, so. I'm almost tempted to say within a three-week period that we would decide as a, the time. I don't have a time definite for it.
To be determined.
To be determined, counselor Borderline.
Uh, yes, um. Personally, I think we. I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
If you wanna say something, you can. Okay, um, I personally think waiting three weeks is um. Kind of a little bit late, in my opinion. Uh. I think we were charged with getting this done, working through it. I would like to allow the time. I think we wait three weeks, that's, you know, we're approaching a month. Um, we are already a month out from taking our seats. And this is our first meeting, so I, I just would not agree with uh, waiting three weeks um, to start moving this along. Because I think once we actually go through this, we might have other additions and uh. More things might come, we might have to go back and relook and just make sure we have our final draft ready. So I, I request that we move a little bit, uh, move along a little faster than that. Thank you.
And, okay, I'm gonna disagree because I am also waiting for the other counselors to come up with something, because I only heard from one. So, and I would like, there, I would like. Their viewpoints, so that we're doing this all at the same time. And we did receive information that I wanted to read. That has several pages to it, so I wanna make sure I'm doing my. Research on my end properly. Did you wanna say something?
Yes, again, I think that's too late. I think the packet can be read within an hour or two. Um, pretty smoothly. Um, I also think counselors, this um. Committee was uh, temporary rules was set up, um, one of the first things set up. So counselors that are interested in sending rules will send them forward. Counselors interested in attending will attend, and I think we need to move business along. And I, I really don't wanna see three-week gaps in between meetings. Thank you.
I understand your concern. I heard it. And as a person who's done this. Multiple times, it takes time to do this stuff. And review everything and type everything up to the specifications, because when I do the typing, I make sure that the councils. The current, the rules committee sees the meeting minutes before I forward it on to the full body. That's how I like to do things, so that we're all in agreement that this is what we discussed. This is how we discussed it, and then bring it forward to them. Because they may see something totally different that they say, oh, yeah, okay, I meant to say this, wait, maybe you guys should take a look at that again.
And also, we may, I believe maybe on February first, which is our town, next town council meeting, um, we might figure out. What committees we're on as liaisons, which may fill up our calendar and make us unavailable at certain dates, so. I think we should wait to find out about those before we actually set a date.
So, we are gonna continue on to rule five. Council Borderline, you still have your hand?
Yeah, I, I think February first is again, very far away, and even with that committee, we could adjust. I think we should, due to due diligence and leave with a meeting on the books and three weeks again is, is far too long, but um. You know, that's fine. If you guys wanna wait that long, then that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Well, we're the, we're gonna wait. So, um, roll five. And I'll read, start reading that one. Um, mayor duties, mayor duties and responsibilities and temporary vacancy of position. Um, section A, the chair of the council, having the title of mayor, should reside at all meetings of the council. And at the stated hour shall call the meeting to order, the mayor shall perform all the duties and accept all the responsibilities of a counselor. Any issues with that? And I think it says on our charter that they're already. On page seven of our charter, that they're recognized as. Yes. As a council, part of the council person.
No issue.
Council Borderline?
I'm okay, thanks.
Alright, it shall be, section B, it shall be the duty of the mayor to preserve order and required procedure in accordance with the rules. To recognize and grant the floor to counselors wishing to speak and to declare all votes. Are we all, does that one? I think, I don't see any changes to that one.
What it would. Require procedure, exactly, what do you think that means?
Procedure as to how we conduct our meetings per our ru- what our rules have. Um, the, the way the meeting should be run, the calling to order, um, declaring the quorum. Roll call, only if the town clerk's not there for the, begin the meeting. Um, because she does have specific duties too, only for the council meeting, not the committee ma- committee meetings.
I wonder if the word require should be follow.
It shall be the duty of the mayor to preserve order and follow the procedure. In accordance with the, in accordance with the rules?
Follow procedure, right, instead of a require procedure. Just like a word.
Oh, I, okay, I see what you're saying.
And follow. Instead of require.
Council Borderline, your thoughts?
I don't have any thoughts on that, thank you.
I can see that, so I'll put a slash in for that part. Alright, section C. The mayor shall have the authority to make a motion, may declare any motion duly seconded, except motions made by him or her. And may speak from the chair upon any debatable pending question. The mayor shall have the same right to vote on any matter as any other counselor and is not limited to breaking the, breaking tie votes. No issue. I have no issue with that. Because according to our charter, they are a counselor. They just have a chairman title. Any issues, counsel Franco?
No, I don't have anything written out.
Okay, so I'm gonna say that's good. Uh, section D. And I believe the town clerk just sent a question to us. Um, do we want to get rid of him or her or he?
Maybe replace it with the mayor instead of him or her. I, I mean, I think it's appropriate to use they, them, them, there are those different terms, I think, um. We just see the title, the mayor, in place of it.
By the mayor, I may speak, okay.
And I'll do a word, word search in this as well, to look for those and highlight them for next meeting.
Okay. Okay. So we can agree to change that him and her to mayor?
Yeah, the mayor, yes.
The mayor. Alright. Let's see. Alright, D, the mayor shall be chair of the committee of the whole. And shall have the right to make motions and vote as a member of that committee.
No issue.
No issue. Alright, section E. In the absence of the mayor, the clerk of the council shall call the meeting to order and call for and declare the election of a chair pro tem. Who shall be chair during the absence of the mayor. Yes, counsel Franco?
I think this is where um. We had that issue. Um, and that we would, we had discussed um, the election of the pro, chair pro tem and maybe put in. Explain how chosen and where its names on the floor. Um, a roll call vote for who to run the meeting and the majority vote, like either it's the majority votes. You need a, five votes, or it, or it could be. Um, whoever has the most votes, if there's multiple, you know?
For the mayor, in the absence of the mayor, the clerk, the clerk of the council shall clear the meeting to order and call for. And call for. Call for an election of. The pro tem. With majority votes and then declare?
Well, I think it's, it, it should be notated, because I know that we did it one time and we were, we didn't know what we were doing. Um, it was, and we didn't know to put the names on the floor. Um, and then everybody can do a roll, it's a roll call vote, um, naming their choice. And then if, I don't know, I, maybe we could work on the wording on this when I come back to it, but maybe we should notate that something should be in there about, um. An explanation on how to choose.
I can agree to that. Counselor Borderline? Can't hear you.
Thanks, sorry. Um, the way my, uh, the way I typed up E is in anticipation of the mayor being absent, the council shall elect. Um, a desk, in, elect a designated chair pro tem who shall be chair. Um, to, who shall chair, be chair any meeting that may be scheduled to occur during the absence of the mayor. In the absence of both the mayor, I'm just reading it into the record here. Do you wanna speak again, Julia?
Uh, did you look at, I'm just gonna ask you, what, did you compare this to the charter when you were writing that?
Yes, like, can I read what I have first? Like, I'll start from the beginning, and then I just, can you ask my question at the end? Is that okay?
I'm waiting.
Okay, it's just easier for me to get it all out, and then you can ask your question without interrupting, so I don't lose where I'm at. Thank you. Okay, it's just easier for me to get it all out and then you can ask your question without interrupting, so I don't lose where I'm at. Thank you. So the way I have written E and, um, my suggestion. In anticipation of the mayor being absent, the council shall elect, um, a designated chair pro tem. Who shall be chair, um, should chair any meeting that may be scheduled to occur during the absence of, um. The mayor. In the absence of both the mayor and the chair pro tem, the clerk of the council shall call the meeting to order. And call for, call and declare the election of the acting chair pro tem. Who shall be the chair during the absence of both the mayor and the designated pro tem. My reasoning on this. This, uh, this proposed rule change does not conflict with the charter, in my opinion. Once again. Confliction, some of its interpretation, it's like biblical, it's like, it, certain things are written in a way that there's more than one, so. This, this proposed rule change does not conflict with the charter, in my opinion, as the charter reads. During the absence of a mayor, comma, the duties shall be performed by a, a member chosen by the council. And I continue, the charter does not specify whether the council has to wait to act in the moment of the absence occurring. Or it can choose to act preemptively. It does not define it how and clarify how we should act on that preemptively. And designate a pro, uh, a chair pro tem at the same time, um, designates a mayor. Um, the specific restrict, restrictions of these actions came from previous additions of the town council rules. Which are subject to, um, regular review and revision upon the seating of every new council. In other words. It is up to the body whether or not we want to elect. And designate a chair pro tem or. As it might be referred to a similar, in similar terms, a deputy mayor, depending on how you do that. So. The way that I'm teasing this apart and I did a lot of research and work on this, um. It, the council will and it doesn't really say. When we should act on that per the charter and, um, so that's. My suggestion and again, I will send out all my type stuff, um, to you guys as well, so that.
Hey, I'm going to disagree, but okay.
Thank you.
And I don't think we need to vote a permanent person in. My opinion. I don't believe in that and because. That, that person does not have to be available all the time. I don't see where we need to have a deputy mayor or another pro tem person. As. The technically the mayor is still a counselor, they just have the chairman title of the meetings. This is for a meeting. This is not for any other thing. This is for a meeting. We're all counselors. Cause of our charter does say the person's only a chairman of the meetings. So, um, Council Franco.
Thank you. I just, um, looked up. What pro tem means and it says it's, it means for the time being. And the term is usually used with an office to note that the individual serving in that role is there temporarily. And temporarily means for that, like that meeting. It, it doesn't mean, um, if we were going to do it for our term. Um, then pro tem should not be the term that should be used. Um, and I think. Um. It doesn't. So when it comes to. Running meetings in the absence of the mayor. Um. It should be chosen that night. And I think this, if this is going to be an issue that's. Um, pushed, then I think this may, um, we can come up with our agreement tonight on, you know, majority rules here. And then the council will decide as a whole body, but. I think, um, when it states that it, the role is there temporarily. Um, there's a distinction of that's why it's called pro tem instead of. It would, it would notate a term, so, and it doesn't.
And. My other problem would be, we would be adding something that the charter does not have. And. We're supposed to be following the rules of the charter. We're not trying to supersede the charter. We should not be superseding the charter, in my opinion. Yes, Council Board lawn?
So there's also something called the Senator Pro Tem. And that's picked in Congress, I believe, at the beginning of every term.
That's a state level, this is.
Once again, oh, can I, can I, again, I ask for your grace and let me finish my thought before inter- interjecting. I, I respect your. Your stance and, and disapproval of it and that's fine, but I just wanna finish my thought, please. There is a Senator, uh, Pro Tem that's, um, at every term and they call it Pro Tem, my, my understand that state. But the wording Pro Tem as stated by Counselor, uh, Franco, meaning at that time. It's used in the same way and it, it is for a longer term of a seat. So that's, that's. I, I, I can respect, um, Counsel Franko's response, but that same term is used for someone who is appointed. At a beginning of a whole term and they re-elect that Pro Tem, um, Senator Pro Tem at the beginning. So, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna greet, uh, yes, Council Franco.
I'd like to also recognize, um.
Go ahead, Council Franco.
Seeing what she's seeing and it's also stating that it's, to, they choose it and the title is president. Pro tempore. And it is probably in their rules. That this is a person that would fill in. We do not have it in our charter saying this type of thing. This is not, um. It's something different. It also has a title of president. So. We don't have a title of deputy mayor to fill in and then say deputy mayor. Pro tempore. Um. So I don't think it's the same and it's not comparable. In that situation, thank you.
Council Board lawn?
I just wanted to check to see how we recognize, um, like ex officio counselors that are here.
I'm not recognizing them right now.
Chair, uh, Chair Parker, we're, you know, members of the committee.
I get that, but right now let the discussion and let us have our discussion right now. If you have any concerns, please email. I did ask.
I, I'd like to get this item though, Chair Parker.
I didn't recognize you.
Why?
I, uh, Chair Parker, I asked, uh, recognize Counselor Baumgartner.
Chair Parker, no, Chair Parker, I didn't.
The chair has not recognized somebody to have the floor to speak. Point of clarification, I just wanna ask how the process is gonna go because, uh, my point of clarification is. We were saying we're gonna wait three weeks. Because we wanted input from other counselors so they could attend and show up and someone's here. And so all I was doing was asking to be, have a counselor recognized. Thank you.
And Chair Parker, you've recognized manager Burt to speak already this evening. Um, so I, I would think it would behoove you to recognize a counselor to speak and participate in the meeting. I'm not a voting member. Uh, si-.
No, you're not a voting member. Excuse me, let me finish, you can.
Ultimately, we'll have a vote in these rules, so.
I can.
Chair Parker.
Can I finish? I will recognize it. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Chair Parker, and, and I appreciate the three minutes, uh, though I am certain that we, uh. Got rid of the three minute speaking limit, but nonetheless, I.
Excuse me, sir, we're in committee, we're in committee.
Nonetheless, Chair Parker and, uh, counselors, good evening. Um, I am very much in favor of establishing some form of a permanent. Uh, pro tempore position. Uh, I would behoove. It would behoove, I think, every member of this committee to familiarize themselves with, uh, obviously. Not just the rules of, of our council, but also, uh, some of the surrounding councils. Uh, you would know that in New London and Norwich, for example, they have the, a permanent position called pro tempore. Uh, and they are the essentially, uh, the second ranked. Counselor on their respective boards. Um, they have a chair in which they say call the, uh, the, in Norwich, the mayor. And in, uh, New London, the president of the council. Um, but in, uh, in terms of the pro tempore position, uh, they are essentially. Uh, the next in line to chair a meeting i- in the absence of the mayor. Um, I would also note that, uh, every counselor that, um, put. Their name forward for mayor. Uh, endorsed establishing some form of a deputy mayor's position, including Counselor Franco, who now serves on this committee. Uh, and. I would also note that. The mayor, Mayor Melendez has supported establishing some form of a deputy mayor's position. Uh, and is on record on, of saying that. So, uh, while I respect your point of view, Chair Parker, always will and always will continue. Uh, I really do believe that we should give strong consideration to something that I believe has. Uh, strong support right now in the council. And that is all. I don't mean to step on your toes and I very much respect the work your committee is doing. Uh, and don't wanna interfere. That is all I will say and I will respect those three minutes, Chair Parker. Thank you.
Heard and as I stated previously, um, we, there was an email that came about. That had this information, I believe it did, and we discussed that we would be reviewing this stuff at the end or. When our time, when we had time for stuff. I understand the concerns about looking at other towns. But this is the town of Groton and we're working within our town charter. So. As it does not state, we do not have something similar to that in our town charter. We only need a person temporarily and during the absence of the mayor at meetings. We do not need to have a permanent one because if. Everyone reads it correctly, the mayor is equal to the council. We're all as one. They only have the title because of the chairman. Of running the council meetings. The performance of a chairman's duties in his or her absence. The, the mayor is listed as. The chairman of the council meetings. So are you guys expecting that the. Quote unquote chairperson, deputy mayor, whatever the person is gonna be doing other duties besides running the meeting? Because we need to establish that quickly. So that all of us can understand where you're going with this. Because I don't see why we need a deputy mayor when we're all equal footing. The mayor is only the title. It's just the title of handling the meetings. If I'm reading this correctly. I've heard the concerns from two people and on currently only three of us can vote on something like that and I think we need to review. And look at it further. Council Franco?
Thank you. Um, it was mentioned what I'm in favor of or what I'm not in favor of. And, um, what I publicly stated at the, at our meetings was that the attorney has stated that we cannot have a deputy mayor. Um, so, and I said in, in what I was in favor of. Um, was, I did not say to have a formal deputy mayor position. Um, so what my motivations are in my words, it would be behoove the council. Um, members to make sure not to speak and try and put words in other people's mouths. Um, I think that's actually in the rules. Um, where it states that no counselor may speak or give the impression that here's be speaks on behalf of counselor without that counselor's authorization. Um. So when it comes to this topic. As I, as was previously discussed, I think this, um, explanation on how to select an election of the pro, the chair pro tem. Should, um. We should come back to that for the exact wording on it. And I think the discussion that's being had here is a bigger discussion. Um. And I think it's. It regardless of what us three decide, I'm sure it will be brought back up to the whole committee. And there'll be a decision there. So I don't wanna get bogged down and take an hour to discuss this one, um. Section, if anything, I'd like to move on and come back to it another time. Thank you.
Council Board lawn?
Thank you. Uh, no, I think it's really important that we, um. You know, look at this and again, it stated there was an attorney's opinion. Um, and what I proposed, um, I think. Yes, we are all elected at large and we all then pick a mayor to run a meeting. But I do, I do think it makes sense no matter who that pro tem chair is, that, you know, throwing them in sporadically. Um, you know, is not always the easiest either, um, and randomly. Um, as the mayor does work closely with the town, Mr. Burt, our town manager, and so sets agendas and so. This would just be a way of making sure that, you know, you have, uh, things that can run smoothly and someone that can step in. Um, at any given time. Um, and I think, you know, with everything going on in our world today, it's, it is nice to have somewhat of a backup. For certain things and again, doesn't give them much power, you're simply running a meeting. Um, and that's what we all signed up to do is to be involved and, um. It, it, it's just would be, um, more of a clerical, uh, admin type position, uh, to assist. Um, and, um, nothing more. Um, but on the day of, you know, as we discussed in the other rules. While we're waiting our sixty or thirty minutes for someone to show up to make sure there's a quorum and vote. Um, you know, other people might not be prepared that night, you know, um, so if someone we select to step in on mayor. Um, you know, i- i- it is important to, you know, ma- allow folks to, uh, be ready and I think. Having, you know, this as I stated would help, help to do that. Um, I do think, um. I think it's important to discuss, um, if you guys wanna talk about it another night, we can, um, I also send this out, but I do think that, you know, this should be, um. This is a. It's not defined as a working meeting, but what we're doing is the work. We have not, the three of us started to work on any of these items. At all together pri- pre- previous to this. And, um, we're inviting counselors and folks to send in, uh, information and, um. I think if they raise their hand, they should be recognized to add a point to that.
Okay, Council Board lawn, can we just stick to the?
And I am, thank you. I am, and I, I just feel that they should get that same floor respect as they are equal to us. And, um, I think to get these rules done, um, as stated, we need to make sure we allow the time for, for people to speak and be recognized. Thank you.
I did eventually recognize him. What I was trying to do is have us go through stuff before his suggestion. We already, already, we already knew if you brought up the pro tem. The fact that he already said he wants to speak about the same issue that we're already discussing. Okay, he said it, he stated it, we are now moving on. We have some, don't, I'm not done. We, I'm, we're gonna continue to move on. Like I said, I want to finish.
Um, please, um, point of order, please do not speak to me like that. I just put my fingers up, I mute, I was muted. I wasn't gonna speak, um, to talk to me like with intent was very inappropriate. And again, I ask for the respect. Thank you.
That wasn't being disrespectful. I'm saying I heard what you said. I heard what he said. Now we're moving on. Rule five F.
I have my hand up.
I don't know it because your hand was never taken down, so I didn't know if you were still standing up for the last thing.
Um, Madam, uh, Chair, I actually took my hand down and I put my hand up and then you said, don't. And that's when I interjected then to, to say that I wasn't going to speak, I was waiting to be called.
Point of order, this is just wasting time.
I agree.
Wasting time. Can we move on to section F now, please?
Council Board, wait, uh, Council Franco, I heard you. Um, Council Board lawn, what is your?
Yes, um, also to move forward as we discussed, since we do have, um, ex officio members here or others that may join in. Um, I think we need to be upfront with our process. Um, I was not aware that there's a three minute speaking time and I think all counselors should know that before they attend. Thank you.
I'm trying to get us through in a timely manner, that way I said I have us to do certain things. I want to go and review the information that we've had. I said in the beginning, I wanted this to be us working on this stuff right now, and that we will bring forth everything to the council. As we're working on it. I said this from the very beginning. Do you still have your hand up, Counsel Board along?
Just want to clarify my notes here, so we're gonna table this section and bring it back up at a later time.
Yes.
More in, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Where we can get more input from other counselors and uh, other messages, is that what we're doing?
Other counselors, yes.
So I, I will submit this um, as written that I have, um, and make sure you guys have it before our next meeting in three weeks. So you have time to review it. Thank you.
Counsel Franco, do you mind reading F?
Sure, no problems. In case of any disturbance or disorderly conduct within the meeting, the mayor or the pro. The chair pro tem shall have the power to order the person causing such disturbance to remove themselves or be removed.
I can agree to that.
I don't have anything on there.
Okay, the last one, the mayor may appoint a parliamentarian whose duty shall be advising the mayor upon request. I have no issue with that. Anybody else?
I have an, I have some notes on this one. I have it so that the mayor shall appoint a parliamentarian, so it's from a requirement than an option. And that they shall be advising the mayor and council upon request. So we would add council.
Okay, I can see that. Counsel Board along.
Um, I can respect uh, Counsel Franco's amendment. Um, mine here had that, um. It should be selected by the mayor and two other counselors. Um, I was checking with the charter and looking back at different rules, even back first to thirty first, and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that. It um. Doesn't conflict, but I think it would be helpful to um, maybe have one or two uh, counselors with the mayor, uh, part of the selection process.
I think the mayor appoints um, all kinds of people to the committees, and I think they can appoint the parliamentarian, because to be honest with you. I don't know how many parliamentarians there are in this area, but I'm sure. Who's not coming to them, and I'm sure this is not that big of an issue.
And I agree with Counsel Franco's assessment, because it does say appoint, they are picking that, and the merit has, is appointing. To other bodies.
That's fine. Thank you.
Mister Burt. I can re- recess the media, adjourn the meeting, I can adjourn the meeting to a time definite, correct?
You would recess to a time definite, I believe, if you want, won't continuing, but otherwise, what you're doing is just adjourning, and you'll take it up. Under old business set the next time.
If we um, recess, do we um, do you have to put in your minutes right away, or do we just continue the meeting?
No, I think I still have to put the meeting minutes in.
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, I would just do a, an adjournment and just pick it up as old business.
Okay.
It's simple.
So. Well, Thursday still work for everyone. Or do you want to do the, nope, because the thirty first, we're not gonna hear our assignments until the first. And I. Believe Counsel Board along said Wednesdays were not good for her. Is that correct, Counsel Board along?
Um, depends on the time. Um, I know a couple of the things that had come through were like five or five thirty, I can't quite remember, and that. Does impede on my work schedule. Um, so I, six is the earliest, um, certain Wednesdays. I am available, but it wouldn't, it would have to be at six at the earliest.
Counsel Franco.
I'm not gonna know until I find out committee liaison, and um.
Alright, so.
And I get my calendar sorted out for all of everything. And we just adjourn, and then um, we can come back after the first, maybe by email and schedule the next one with enough notice.
Okay.
Cause I, I, I believe like the first Thursday of the month is Economic Development Commission, the committee, and I, I don't know. If I will or won't, and. I, I'm just not sure, and I think Thursdays are possibly Athletic Fields Task Force, so I'm not sure when that will fall, or if. I'll even be on it, so I, I don't know.
Alright, so we're gonna have to determine a time, because we do not know our assignments at this time. And. I will email everyone, once we have our assignments, I'll probably email the next day after our meeting to find out. Actually, everybody's gonna have to be able to find out when the next meetings are for the other committees. And we won't. Unless we put it in two weeks. And do it on the twenty seventh. Just continue one at a time. And then leave those stuff that we have tabled on until we get further information.
Yeah, and then we can go through everything, one sweep through, and then go back and fix. I think, I think that's the best way.
Counsel Board along, you good with that, to do it on the seventh?
Um, yeah, well, on which day?
The twenty seventh of January this month. That puts us at two weeks from today.
Yeah, that's what I was requesting before, not waiting until the appointment, so that we can get the work done, so um, we have two weeks, so. You, originally, it was stated that you're waiting on the appointments on February first, that's greater than uh, that's almost three weeks away, so yes, any earlier. Even next week, I mean, I think we um, can get moving.
I, I, I would like some time to review the stuff, that's why I'm putting it two weeks out.
That, that's your choice. Thank you.
Counsel Franco.
I'll put you down for the twenty seventh, if something arises. Cause I don't have my calendar, I haven't been able to really work out my calendar, because I've been so busy this year, so I was sick. And then this whole week has been absolutely insanity at work, and I usually, this is the new year, I re- I redo my calendar, and. I haven't been able to get to it.
Motion to adjourn?
I need a second.
Second.
So.
Good night, everyone.
We didn't take a vote yet.
Yes, all in favor?
I.
Over, bye.
Alright, we adjourned at seven forty.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye bye.